I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning board of appeals meeting on Wednesday, October 5th at 7:04 PM. The first agenda item is a an application from Jason Walsh requesting a variance pursuant to Mass General Law's 40A, Section 10 and Section 9.2 of the Douglas bylaws for side yard setback relief of dimensional regulations, Appendix B, to replace a pool in a VR zone district. The property is located at One Pilgrim Court, MAP 117, Parcel 29. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. That notice that I just read was published in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, and it was also posted here in the town hall. And hearing tonight's case is Mr. Bombara, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Forget, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and myself.
My name is Roseman Harris with Alpha Omega Engineering. I'm representing the client, the owner of the property. And if you can allow me share my screen, we'll know what we have.
Yeah, go ahead, sir. I just, before you start, one certified mail was sent to all of you about us, and Jen received the cards back, so we're all set. Go ahead, sir.
So, you can see here, there was a tree came down on the house, the deck and the pool, and the project house was repaired and the deck was completely replaced inside the setback line. The only thing that's remaining is the pool itself, the upper ground, the zoning pool. We did this survey, there was nothing there except the same area and expanded outside the property line. So we don't know where was the pool exactly, but the new one will be completely inside the property line, but it will be crossing the setback, so we'll only get two feet away from the setback line. We went before the conservation commission because it is western of the property and it does the pool wall. So the only remaining thing is just the zoning board's appeal approval, but to rebuild the pool in the same location, it might, it would be a little bit closer to the house, so we don't cross the property line as I pleased the previous pool wall. Other than that, it's just straightforward above ground pools, no major construction will be done.
Okay, I did check with the building department today because the pool's only two feet from the lot line, and these homes aren't that old, but apparently this is not the first, wasn't the original owner. When they bought it, the pool was in because it's way too close to the lot line. And I guess a tree fell on it, and they're trying to replace what was there, which was in violation, but they're not the ones who actually did it. So, does anybody have any questions of the applicant? The applicant's representative?
Yeah, just curious, what's the size of the new pool going in?
The old one was 18 foot diameter, and the new one will be 18 foot diameter also.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
We have some pictures of the damage you want to see.
Yeah, I had asked the applicant for that when I made a phone call to him to inspect the site. If you don't mind, if you get the pictures, that'd be great.
So, can you see that?
Uh, no, check.
No.
Okay. One second.
Oh, he's pulling that up. Was there ever a permit pull on this?
No.
Can you see that?
No, it's not up, sir.
Oh, you still have your site plan up?
Technology.
Great work.
The applicant also signed in.
Yeah, okay.
How's that?
Good, all your thumbnails are up. Click on one.
I just want to bring the pictures up.
Yeah.
Technology's doing something wrong. Pardon me. I have no idea why I don't want to share it. I try to. It just pictures were taken from inside the house, actually, not from outside. So it's just showing as much.
That's okay, because I asked him, he wasn't sure whether or not he had pictures, but Mr. Chairman, too, because I pulled up on the assessment field of the town of Douglas, and it was purchased by Mr. and Mrs. Walsh. And it said on here that was the pool, but upset false, that neither was over there at the time the house was purchased. I mean, when it was purchased, it was there, but before that, it was the whole. So I'm thinking the pool was probably there 17 years since our husband built it anyway. If you go to the property, look on the left-hand side of the driveway. There's wetlands in there, and it continues to be on the house. Of course, we know that.
You got the picture up?
Yeah, there it is.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you can see the distance between the pool now and the other side of the street. It's down there, so. Must've been a big tree.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
You.
So, I don't take issue with him putting it back there. It was there for so long. It's not his fault, the guy never got the permit. I'm just, for notes that he didn't, the person did not apply for the permit when they put the pool.
The previous owner?
Yes, sir.
Right. Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments on this application?
Is the deck being replaced with it?
I'm sorry?
Is the deck being replaced with it?
That's already done.
So they've already repaired the roof, repaired the kitchen, and built a new deck to it, to the area that it was before.
Okay.
Yeah, what it said in there was quite a damage there around the house for a while because of the current COVID.
Yeah, and a deck is within the setbacks. It's within, yeah. All right.
So was that, was the repaired deck under the permit for the repairs of the house?
Yes. And that's been all side off, the house and the deck repaired.
Anybody, no other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Charlie, I mean, John, I'm sorry, John. John to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Seconded by Ron. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. I guess we have Zoom, so, aye, Dan Heaney?
Aye, John Bombara.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
All right, the public hearing's now closed. Anyone want to make a motion on this case?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to approve the, it's a variance on a pool. It is, let me see, number seven, sorry.
Let this do it.
You got it?
Yep.
On 2022-07, Pilgrim Court, Jason Walsh.
Okay, to approve as submitted?
Yes, approve as submitted, thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara to approve as submitted. We have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Forget. Any further discussion?
Will there be an as-built required?
Yeah, we can make that a condition, certainly.
Well, you're two feet from the property line.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike, yeah.
Okay, so we'll add that to the motion that.
So you'll have to get an as-built, too. Okay?
So we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Forget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Aye, Dan Heaney?
Bombara, aye.
Palmer, aye.
Forget, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay, we'll get the decision drafted and get it to you as soon as possibly can. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. And we did have a list of some items for discussion, but I'm going to jump to number three. We have the town planner with us, and he was going to give us a rundown on those proposed zoning changes. Are you there, Matt?
I am, Mr. Chairman, good evening.
Good evening.
You hear me okay, everybody?
Yes, we can.
Sorry for lack of video, but I'm pretty sure the prompt of my name is probably better looking than I am.
Yeah, I was going to say, thank you.
Yeah, you're probably into Janice, right? So what we have, we have some proposed amendments to the zoning bylaws prepared for town meeting. A couple that are repetitive petitions. One is adding a definition under Section 10 to add a definition for height, for building height, excuse me. And there is a new bylaw for solar under Section 6.8. And there's also a petition for a general bylaw, earth removal, or Article 12, creation of that section. And if that were to pass at town meeting concurrently, we also have the removal of zoning bylaw Section 6.1. Just for the record, I just want to state that originally, for earth removal, Mr. Chairman, I had originally drafted some amendments to Section 6.1 of the zoning bylaw. And I, Ken Fraser, excuse me, building commissioner, Ken Fraser and I had gone over this together and produced some language, submitted it to town council. Town council came back with some feedback and actually recommended that we submit that as a general bylaw due to some, well, some exemptions that wouldn't apply to the zoning bylaw or things that we could control if it were submitted as a general bylaw. So originally, it wasn't going to be a general, but per council's recommendation, it made sense. So what it does, it puts the earth removal under the purview of the Board of Select moving forward. So happy to answer any questions that the board has. Through Mass General Law 40A, Section 5, one of the boards has to initiate the process, descend to the select board, and eventually there's a public hearing with the planning board, and that is scheduled for October 13. Mr. Fraser and I were talking today about this, and we thought that this might be a, this is a really good idea to have the GBA take a look at these. And I think moving forward, I'd like the opportunity to probably have GBA look at zoning bylaws in advance before they even start this process next time. So I appreciate you guys looking at this, and certainly receptive to the feedback idea.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
And the bylaw concerning the building height, that's, that's, that's some minor changes as well.
Yeah, that's, you pulled that out of the state building code?
Yep. The only thing I'm doing is, the proposal is just for height, it's not stories and all that. It appeared to be too confusing for all parties involved, so just height. It's an average height around the building, no more than 35 feet.
Okay.
As it reads now, it just says maximum height of 35 feet. It gives no definition on how to come up with that 35 feet.
Okay, all right, I like that. Just those words have made a big difference.
It's actually.
Overall, 35 feet, but it was, yeah.
Yeah, it's very consistent statewide to use that terminology.
It actually simplifies it, but it makes it, makes it better, much easier.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to force the architects and engineer to give me calculations to prove what it is, what the height is, but so be it.
Okay. All right, is there anyone that had any questions for the town planner? Or the building commissioner on this?
No, it's just with the solar bylaw, because somebody created, I think, 14 pages. We might want to, do we have an opportunity to email you if we have any comments, Matt?
Through the chair, absolutely, Mr. Fitzpatrick, government.
Because it's just a lot to take in in a couple minutes, so, and I don't think everybody's going to sit here and read it.
Nope.
Section for section at the moment, so if you could entertain that, it might be helpful.
Okay.
Shouldn't we have, like, a training thing to get this information to us?
Um, oh, just what's printed?
On the, yeah, so you have this, so if you, if it's helpful for you, Ron, you could, if Matt doesn't object to it, or Ken, you reach out to either one of those two, and they could help you understand what he's proposing. It just goes through a lot of sections, so it gets into lane clearing and things like that, setbacks, so it's a lot to sit here and go through right now and understand it all.
So I can.
They just struck down the office.
Okay.
Make an appointment. Probably ever there.
Yeah, don't listen to Charlie.
Don't listen.
Jesus.
If you don't mind that.
That's never going to go away.
No, I'm interested in this, in to do a zoning, I want to know all about it.
Yeah. It would be helpful if you. It would be helpful if you could do that before the 13th, before their meeting for planning, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
I'll see it before you go.
You agree with that, Matt?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So anybody else have any questions, or can get in touch with, with Ken?
Ken.
And, all right, great, we appreciate your time, thank you, Matt.
Just a reminder to everybody, don't email through the board, because then we could be deliberating outside a meeting, so it's better to go through their department.
Well, send it to Jen, and Jen, send it to the right party.
Yeah, be the easiest way.
The next item up for discussion is, we're going to deal with number two, which was Mr. McDermott, not Mr. Dermott Collins, I'm sorry. He had contacted the building commissioner about, after he got his variance approved, and said that he had somebody else, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, Ken, he had someone, that the septic system had said that he can't put his septic system where he was granted the variance. So I have it here for us to sign tonight.
You mean the shed?
You mean the shed?
The shed, yes. That's right, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, septic system, I don't remember that.
Yeah. So he, Jen, well, Ken got, had a conversation with him. Jen contacted me, I said, well, tell him if he wants to come in, we'll discuss it, but as of right now.
The only problem with that, Mr. Chairman, is the public hearing's already been closed, so we can't take in any.
Oh, no, we're going to sign his thing.
I know that, but we couldn't even really discuss his project, because we already closed the public hearing.
No, I understand that, he's going to have to modify his request or do something, but I do want to, the decision is here, I want to sign it tonight and submit it, otherwise he'll get it by default.
Yeah, no, I would, I would sign it like that, but he's, he would fall under repetitive petition if he, he's already, the case has already been heard, it's enclosed, it's been voted on, the decision's already printed up. Anything other than that would be repetitive petition. Because if you recall, I asked him a few times, you sure you don't want to hold off and talk to your, no, no, no? Okay, so.
But I believe on the other side of that, that pipe is at maximum two inches, so he's got other room he can move it to.
As he explained it to me, the pipe goes up at an angle from his pump chamber up to the leaching field. And at angle, if he was to go back, now he needs to go back 10 feet to put a wall in, so he has a maintenance area around the shed, which I'm pretty sure when we were having a discussion about that, that didn't seem to be an issue when it was on the side boundary line.
Correct.
So that's why he said he can't get back then 10 feet, because he'll be getting into the ground where the pipe's going up. I don't have a copy of the septic plant, as-built septic plant, showing any of that that I can find so far. I'll do some more digging, see if I do have it. So I can't verify how deep the pipe is, where the pipe's located on the hill or any of that.
As we discussed at the meeting, that it was going to leave about a two-foot space. Jim Palmer, actually, is the one that was talking about this. Leave a two-foot space behind it, which he was going to have about a 24-inch-high wall, 24 to 30-inch-high wall, which would give you adequate space to maintain the back of the shed. If you go back 10 feet, you're creating a storage area, and that's not what his application was stating.
He was going back 10 feet?
Well, no, that's what he's stating now, he needs to go back 10 feet. But I'm not comfortable talking anymore about this case, because the case has been closed.
Yeah.
So I would, I would prefer to have legal counsel.
Well, we'll move forward with his.
Yeah.
With his.
I'm not trying to be, I'm just trying to.
No, I understand.
That's all.
Yeah, yeah, stop talking about it now. You want me to give you that?
Yep, yeah, for some reason, there's like three copies in there, so. We could sign them all, that would be great.
I wanted you to, when I was in the office.
I think everybody had in their package also the meeting schedule for 2023. So if we had a chance to review it, and I guess we could approve the post-meeting schedule for 2023 by a motion and a vote.
I'll make the motion, we approve it. Outside 2023.
Yeah, but do you do realize, John, that one of the meeting dates is July 5th? Are you going to be recovered by then?
Possibly not, but he's not, he just.
I am, if you guys would change that when it comes, but we're doing the rest of the calendar right now.
I have no issues, but it was just a minor joke for Charlie.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Palmer to approve the proposed meeting dates for 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Heaney?
Palmer, aye. Palmer, aye.
Forget, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay.
I missed, I missed the calendar there.
Do you want a coffee?
No, I got it here, sorry.
Okay, we took care of that. And then we had North Brown up for discussion as well, and Town Council was here, he was going to be in contact with them. I haven't heard anything from Town Council since that meeting, I don't know, if you can?
I haven't heard anything from Town Council.
Okay. And we do have a new report from the consulting engineer that still lists some things that have been on there for months, in some cases, years.
Any movement on the as-bills for the water sewer, water and sewer department?
I do not have any movement on the as-built for the water sewer department. I did take a ride up there yesterday, just to do a last-minute check before the meeting tonight. I did meet with Tim Barlow out there. They're trying to button things up for the wintertime. They've moved the mulch pile off the road, they cleaned some things up. They, they're trying to get their mat grass in place so that they can get some germination going on there. They got two out of three approvals from the power company to use a new concrete vault for their transformer pads, so they are in the process of getting the power up to Center Road now. They had one more approval, which Lance Electric, I believe, was going out today, or Ingrid was going out today to get their final approval on it. If that's the case, then they're going to continue down through the road. They get three more to put into Center Road. Once that happens, I guess he did say that he was pretty sure they had another PNS, so they're going to put the next foundation in on the hole that's excavated. He anticipates the first of spring, early summer, that he wants to start getting that final loop road done for Phase 4, start getting that, so. Okay, sounds encouraging if that does happen.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Overall, the site, I think, is looking much better up there. They get a lot of vegetation growing, they did put the binder in for the sidewalks. It isn't the most level, but it's, at least sidewalks in there. The retention pond seemed to be doing good, I didn't see any water in any of them. The back retention basin, in back of the left side of Phase 2, Phase 1, even though that hasn't been finalized, hasn't been final graded or anything, because they're waiting for stabilization, on the Center Road nautical way before they put all the effort into cleaning silt out, because they'll just have to do it again. But there is quite a bit of vegetation, and I did not see any water setting in.
Okay.
You're still issuing permits, aren't you?
Second.
You're still issuing permits?
Yes.
Does the water and sewer have to sign off to bring water and sewer into those foundations?
Water and sewer has already been, already informed them that they're not signing off any of their properties on nautical way until they have the as-bills.
So is it?
Because, yes, they do have to sign off.
Is it reasonable to keep giving them building permits when you don't, the town, the other half of the town's saying they're not going to sign off on water sewer permits?
Well, it keeps them from getting any occupancy permits anyways, because I don't issue occupancy permits until they sign off.
Do they need water sewer to sign off to get a building permit?
No, they need it for occupancy. Because it's in the road, it's just that final tie-in curb stop and times that Mr. Sullivan goes through and reviews. I guess he is waiting for his as-bill to, I will make mention again that if they want to get any occupancy permits on nautical way, all the as-bills for Phase 1, Phase 2 have to be submitted.
Yes.
What's the status of 63?
63, they are in trimming now.
Although you got it plastered?
They get plastered.
Nice.
74 is plastered, all the units on that side now are plastered.
Good.
55 closed, I believe. 63, they're trimming. 76, I think, was the last one up. He said he had that sold again.
76 or 74, something like that.
74. That should be the units on that side. As slow as it is, they are working on it, so.
As far as you know, 63's still under agreement with the affordable applicant that came in before us a couple months ago.
I haven't heard anything to the, to the difference on it, so I really don't know.
Could have been more to it than what we were thinking about that.
More to what?
More to the idea of maybe, I won't get into it, it'd be embarrassing for the board, so hang on, let's say. Anyway, let's go on then.
Well, what I'm looking at as an individual on the board is the purchase and sales was done prior to the first of the year. And when I looked at it a month ago, it was studded walls. So that's why I'm inquiring about that, and I'm persistent about asking about it for no other reason, because when we approved to reverse Phase 3 and Phase 4, we were told as a board, we're 100% sold out, and knows that we need inventory. That was the statement made, and then it was kind of, it was kind of embarrassing as a board member to go up there and see studded walls a year later. So that's why I'm asking about it now, continue to ask about it until they're actually sold out, so.
Okay. Anything else, Ken?
That's all I have with that site for now.
You're comfortable with the project as a whole?
Yeah, it's cleaned up a lot. I noticed that they were putting the granite pillars back in for the lighting that's supposed to go along the roadway. They had had one on the entranceway, and that got broken off. And I hadn't mentioned anything to them, I kind of wanted to see what was going to happen with that. There was a new one up there, and then going down Phase 1, Phase 2, they had put those in, going down through, so.
Appreciate your efforts in getting, getting it up to speed where it needs to be.
We try.
Well, it needs to be acknowledged, so. It's a give and take, I understand that we're, we're all out in the real world and a everyday thing.
We have questions we need answered, so.
Yep. Thank you, Ken. And we have minutes from our meeting in June, as well as our meeting in August. I don't know if everybody had a chance to review them or not. Did everybody get them emailed to them? The minutes?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure that was happening.
Well, I did.
Yeah, that was last week, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think it was, or was it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Ironically, in, uh, the June minutes, it's talking about, that's when the applicant was in the audience. Because it's in our meeting minutes for number 63. You on the June 22nd one, Joe?
Uh, yes.
No, I'm just waiting to see if you have it done, because I was going to make a motion.
Oh, no, I had read it in line, so.
Make a motion to accept the June 22nd meeting minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to approve the June 22nd meeting as written, seconded by Mr. Bumbara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Heaney?
Aye, John Bumbara.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Fojt.
Aye, Mike Fitzpatrick.
Okay, minutes are approved as written. What about the August 3rd meeting? Ready to move forward on that?
Make a motion to approve August 3rd. Second, minutes.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bumbara, seconded by Mr. Palmer, to approve the August 3rd minutes as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Heaney?
Bumbara, aye.
Palmer, aye.
Ron Fojt, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay.
Problem, Joe?
I was going to say Charlie, but, you know.
All right, no, I think that covers our agenda for tonight. Anybody has anything else they want to discuss? Okay, if not, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bumbara, seconded by Mr. Palmer, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Heaney?
Bumbara, aye.
Palmer, aye.
Fojt, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at 7:37.